Well, I would like to welcome everybody to the planning board meeting. I make a motion to open the planning board meeting today, May the twentieth. At, um, for starting time of seven o'clock. Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded by Rob. All those in favor of opening the planning board meeting.
Seven oh nine, I guess.
At seven oh nine, Jim Guarino.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
And I Frank Hookham and I as well. So with this motion, the meeting now is officially opened at seven oh nine. The, uh, the first order business is to read the agenda. And the first item of the agenda is minutes. For, um, May the sixth, hearing there will be none. Uh, planning board business will be discussing a welcome introductions and planning board overview. We'll be talking about planning board objectives and discussions of future topics for the planning board. And then thirdly, lastly, we'll be talking about the schedules for summer meetings. And then we'll look at, uh, see if there are any reports from any other boards or entities. And if we have a town planner report. Are there any items not anticipated by? Uh, the chair or any amendments to the agenda for this evening?
No.
Hearing none. I make a motion to accept the agenda as posted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Rob?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And I Frank Hookham and I as well. But the, uh, the first order business will be minutes. So starting off with the minutes, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you like me to share the minutes? No? Okay. Uh, does anybody have any, uh, changes or corrections, edits or modifications to the minutes?
Steph told me she had none.
Yes, I, I, I only had a couple of minor ones.
Okay.
Uh, can share my screen. It not that they're that is that hard to find. They're shortened. It's not that much. But let's see. Okay, so these are the minutes. Let's get to the beginning. So these are the minutes for May the sixth. So on page two. Uh, under hearing, adding may wise made the motion, blah, 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 Frank O'Callen, and it was V I R, is that a V O R? That was, you know, again, very minor. There was a, um. Another very minor. Change under board reorganization. If I could find that. Right here. So it's this third paragraph that's a select board member Jeff Waldron, blah, blah, blah. And it just had two periods at the end of that. And so, oh, there was one other question that I had, and I could be right. I'm not sure. Uh, but I had a question on it. It was right here. Did it mean to say February two thousand twenty-two?
No, no, I actually corrected that on my thing too, uh, from the plan in December twenty twenty-four. I'm gonna put that in. So just, uh, it'll take, we'll take outdated to twenty-four twenty-two for the plan presented. December twenty twenty-four. That's what the hearing was.
So that's all that I have.
Good proofreading. I don't have any. Comments.
Yeah, none here either.
Okay. So I make a motion to accept the, uh, the minutes, uh, for May the. Was it six?
Six.
Yes.
As amended, do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, Jim Guarino?
Hi.
Rob Wolf?
Hi.
And I Frank Hookham and I as well. So, uh, thank you. These minutes have been accepted. Heidi, will you arrange to get those posted or is that something that I?
No, no, if I do that, yep. Cause I'll make the, I'll make the corrections and submit. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item is on the agenda is a hearing and having none, we will fortunately move on and. But this would have been the perfect time. We would have been just right. It's exactly seven fifteen. So anyway, we'll move on to, uh, the, the, the current planning board business and we have three items there. I, I feel as though the welcomes introduction and planning board overview should probably be taken out of order since we don't have Brett, which was one of the major reasons to have this. Uh, but the item two is and item three are critically important and we should discuss those and that is. Planning board objectives, discussions of, uh, future topics for the planning board. So. Uh, the, the first thing I, I wanted to say about that is, um, and let me pull this up if I may. I'm just gonna get to bear with me one second. So, uh. I wanna share my screen on this. Uh, and it's just real brief, but I, I, I think it's helpful in this conversation. I was hoping that Brett would hear this as well. But, uh, this is the roles and responsibilities of the planning board and, uh, I, I would like to get this document shared to all of the, uh, the planning board members. You know, we pretty much know what these things are, but, uh, sometimes it doesn't hurt just to read and see some of the things again to, to. Bring the focus back to some of the areas that we haven't worked on in a while. And what I kind of want to highlight with this is that the planning of board municipal planning board, uh, separated into two different categories of responsibility and that is. Permitting and approvals and second is planning, which is what, uh, we were discussing at our reorg last meeting that. Uh, we will be a co-chaired board where. Stephanie, uh, will be taking on more of the responsibility of the permitting and approval. And I, my focus would be more on the, the planning. So a planning board is tasked with the planning of the future growth, development and, uh. Preservation of municipalities, physical resources. Equally important, planning boards are tasked with developing and implementing of land use regulations such as zoning. Uh, bylaws, ordinance and subdivision control and regulations through the issuance of permits and approvals. So they do go very hand in hand. They're very important, but they are, you know, I, I think of one is a little bit more, um. Macroscopic, they'll be a little more microscopic and, um, Steph certainly has, um. Has shown her skill and skill set in the, uh, in going into that microscopic and, uh, working on bylaws and things like that. So with that said, I wanna not go to this one, but I wanna go to this document. So can everybody see the, uh, the spreadsheet? Okay, so this is, um, the, the spreadsheet that we came up with probably about a year ago. Uh, actually, and then I, we reprioritize it in, in May. I think we actually came up with it in, in March or April and then we reprioritized it in May and put it on the spreadsheet. And these Steph put them in a slightly different set of order than, than what they had originally come in. So she put them in basically four different categories. So planning and development, which is basically that macroscopic, um, bylaws, which can kind of fall in both areas, uh. How we focus on, on the bylaws, writing the bylaws obviously is more microscopic, but, uh, having the bylaws and. Prioritizing which ones are which and, um, and how we, we set the, the, the focus on those bylaws is more macroscopic. And it rules regulations, procedures. And then the last one was streets and pedestrians is basically the flow throughout our town and, uh. I, I, I think some of this is critically important to our future and how we'd like to see our town grow. And others are, you know, just day to day and what's happening right now in our towns with some of the developments that we have going on. So that's my preface to this topic. So. Uh, I'll give you a moment to look at these.
That's a good list, Frank.
Thank you. So we've done some of them already, which is nice. And, uh, if you can see it, maybe I'll try to see if I can enlarge it a little bit more, uh, so you can read it better. You'll read less, but you'll see what there is better. Some of them we've actually done, we could cross out and there are really big ones, you know, the, the three A and the improvements to the housekeeping. Our ones that were done, affordable housing. Um, anti-segmentation and, uh. The Adesha permit condition. So, you know, we, we've done some of them. We just need to kind of keep working.
Were there still remaining items from the housekeeping? I thought there were some.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, that, I think that's, I'll let you speak to this idea, but that, I think that's one of the things that you did the grant for was to really kind of clean up. Not only the bylaws, but then the, the other aspect of this was the rules and regs and also the documents and, and so on, just kind of getting everything, um. Coordinated better.
Right, well, the rules and regs are not part of the grant. The, the grant is only on our bylaws. Um, because the rules and regs are the planning board's job to work. The, the bylaws work with the zoning board of appeals as well. So, um. We, we're gonna, Chris Kenny has had some. Dangling issues that we didn't get to this time this year, uh, which we. I'm gonna talk with him to see, can we wait till we do the whole big comprehensive zoning overhaul or is there anything that's really pressing? Um, what come, it came up as pressing was from conservation and from Chris was the stormwater management. That, um, Joyce said they would really like to get something in our bylaws for stormwater management for properties. For, that will be based on amount of ground disturbance. So not on. Anyone putting an addition on their house like that, but the amount of ground being disturbed. So it's a huge addition or a whole new houses being put in. That there's some way to address stormwater runoff and management there because right now. We do not have anything on our books for a residential property to be managed with stormwater versus other towns do. And this is becoming more and more of a concern with environmental issues as, as how can you help? Manage things that are close to buffer zones and right now we have nothing for the conservation agent to act on. So it's, it's. She's gonna be sitting down and coming up with some objection, some suggestions and talking them over with Chris and then we'll be presenting them to the planning board for discussion.
I mean, that almost seems like something we'd have to hire a consultant to help us through.
Uh, Joyce is pretty much a consultant. I mean, that's what they're, her company had done. So I think what we get from her, we'll see, you know, but let's just see what, what type of language they're looking for. Uh, but I think that is one that is gotten a high priority from both. And then I've also been asked. And it's not on this one. So Frank, the one I sent to this afternoon added, um, the sign by law to this list.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not on there. So that needs to be added.
Sign, sign, do we wanna say sign of flags or just sign?
Signs. Yep. I have been asked again if, if we will look at that.
Excuse me. So believe it or not. For about the last two years, I haven't gotten sick at all and then, uh. And now all of a sudden, um. I'm sickened twice in two, in one month. I've got another cold. Hopefully it won't be as bad, but anyway.
It's cause you wanna retire.
The other thing we were talking about, if I can throw my two cents in for a moment, uh, and I'll, I'll kind of put these two together is. B S, which we should probably say. Stands for. Battery. Energy. Um, storage. That's what B S says. And that together with our solar bylaw is currently the little, the few words we have are, are part of this and I. I, we have to see, but my, my thought is that we pull out the, uh, battery separate from the solar because you don't have to necessarily have. Battery with solar. You can, but you don't have to. And, uh, so we should look at both, you know, in terms of large scale and small scale, what people do at their, in their homes for backing up their solar, uh. In the house versus, uh, larger systems that, um, that back up the grid. So that's my, my two cents. So maybe I should be just to buy initials by them, uh, like who proposed them and, um. The, the next thing that's gonna start to happen is, is, um. Who's gonna champion them? That'll be the next thing is I think that's the next thing we wanna look at instead of. All five of us doing all the work only during our, uh, planning board meetings that we do some work off, offline, offsite. With a subcommittee subgroup or, or something to work on some of these things and then bring it back to the larger committee.
Yeah, so the comprehensive bylaw update, I plan to do that. I think Steph was gonna work on it with me and the consultant. And, um, Jane, yeah, and Jane Mutterazzo, who used to be on advisory, um, was a contracts attorney. She's willing to work on that as well.
Do we have document sharing on this list?
This is a straight Excel, so there is no document sharing on this one.
Well, that was one of the items that we discussed last term was how we were gonna collaborate or document share without violating open meeting laws.
Right, and I did ask Jeremy about Google Docs and he said, no, they don't want people using Google Docs. Um, they definitely want people using something that's on the town server. And I will find out, it might be SharePoint that we can try and set something up with, but there is. The town definitely wants people using something that will sit on the town server.
All right, can everybody see, uh, three all the way to four F at this point or four E anyway?
Yes.
Are there any of these that anybody thinks should be at the top of what we work on? This year?
Updating application forms and fees, I'd say is really a big priority. We, because right now our fees are not aligned all the way through on the website on different forms. And I don't think our forms are very clear.
That's something that I had started a while back looking at other towns.
Yeah.
Fees were, I don't know if that was helpful or still valid at this point, but.
Yeah, Jim, do you wanna, I mean, I'm happy to work with you on that too, but. Right now, when someone goes to look and figure out what, what their project is and what forms they need, it's just not very clear. And it's still very confusing. Are they putting in for a site plan review or a special permit? Do they have to do both?
I, I can start taking a look at that.
Wonderful.
It's also confusing. Do they go to the Z B A for special permit versus the planning board for a special permit? Because ADUs, even though we came up with the bylaws, they're all going to Z B A.
So, I don't, I don't know. I'm very interested in the, the streets and pedestrians, the planning aspect of those. So there's. The. The whole, um. The whole town center project, which I think really. I think the board really needs to be participating in that. And, um. The, uh. Again, go over the complete streets, see if we wanna reprioritize it, see if, you know, what we wanna do with that. And, um, cause I think we've. Um, you know, the, we haven't really done that in a while and the, you know, Jeremy and Sean have, you know, picked out a few things from that, but like, you know, we may have. Other things we wanna push and, um. And finally, you know, Frank did some work and I was trying to help a little bit on the sidewalks and crosswalks. And then, uh, that's kind of been lying fallow for a while, but I'd really like to hop back on that too. And see if we can, um, take some of those things and put them in. Maybe the complete streets plans and get them prioritized in there. I think there's, um. There's a couple of things that look like we could do that would be, you know, relatively easy, relatively low budget. And then there's. A couple of things that are maybe really big deals and. Will take, uh, a lot of time and a lot of waiting to do, but, uh, would be good long-term improvements.
I think that's really good. That's a good point.
I do feel in the sort of the sidewalks and trails things. One of the, the long-term things and there's, there's something in the complete streets plan about this, although I think. Um. It needs to be updated and maybe modified some is, uh. Better connection between town center and farm pond. See what we can do on that one. I think that, that should be a really high priority.
So how would that dovetail into item D?
Item B.
D is in Delta.
You, you mean the.
The other development.
Well, I, I put it in C. Not D.
Okay.
The review of sidewalks and crosswalks and prioritizing Sherbrooke neighbors to places of interest. So the places of interest would be, you know, let's say, um. Um, Ivy Lane to downtown, which we already have on Ivy Lane to the fields, Ivy Lane to, um. Farm Pond or town center to, to Farm Pond. And if we already have a connection from Ivy Lane to downtown, then, you know, Ivy Lane could get not only to downtown, but also to. Farm Pond with drive and they could either walk or bicycle or. Use some other means of, uh, of getting there than everybody always having to hop in a car all the time.
Right, but downtown traffic improvement.
Right, but that's D. Let me do this. I can do this quick enough. I'm not, I'm not Steph.
I, I don't see the grid lines. That's part of the problem.
There you go.
You highlighted it. I did.
That help?
Much.
Okay, so that takes care of that section. This section. This section. So then we got this one and there's a big huge one here, uh, town center master plan and, uh. Updating the master plan, which we have a couple of years to do that, right? Heidi, don't we?
Yeah, we have a couple of years, but it's gonna take a couple of years to do. So it probably should be looking at it, starting to come up with, um. Like an, an, a, a, a flow plan of how to like start looking at the sections. So I'm working on the open space one right now with the open space committee and it's, um. Been over a year probably that we're working on it and it's getting close, but it's. It's a lot of work and master plan's bigger.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Steph.
How are you?
Good, sorry I'm a little late.
Good. Um, Brett isn't, uh, uh, but, uh, Rob, uh, Jim and I are with Heidi.
Were we expecting her?
Yeah.
Did someone reach out to her to tell her it was tonight?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So we were just going over the priorities, uh, you know, if, who, who thinks that some of these are important and may even want to be, uh. Kind of like the lead on, uh, on this. So we. We've put your name in one of them.
Yeah, that seems appropriate. And, um, J, J, um, just so I know is.
Jane Amazurazo.
Oh, God, right. Okay, got it. Right, thanks.
Yeah, it's not personless on here and this should be actually be Heidi Doyle. I'm trying to be, uh, my best Steph Harris doing this, you know, trying to run the meeting and do the, uh. You know, show the screens and also by the same time also try to run it.
Okay, um. I would guess that I would have some involvement in, in stormwater too, just.
Yes, please.
Well, I'm, I'm not moving.
I think stormwater and groundwater protection are gonna go together.
Yeah, I don't know if.
I'd combine them.
Okay. Okay. And, and then also just as a reminder, Frank, that I'll be, my, um, aim is to make sure that I'm involved in all of them, but that's obviously makes sense from a planning board perspective, um, because.
I, I, I think, yeah, same, but, um. I, I do think we could have some champions to work on some of these things.
Okay.
And then. Jim was gonna help us with some of the updating of the application forms and fees and just looking at the, um. All, all of the, um.
It seems like B would go with that too.
Brett's not here. We get to put, use her to fill in the blanks, right?
Right.
Oh, good, Jim. I see you volunteered for some of this stuff. That's great because that's, um, that requires a, someone to sort of help think through a lot of that stuff. Thank you.
Rob Wolf, he's put a lot of. He's worked a lot in this area.
He may as well put me next to E as well.
Yeah, Rob is a natural at E. That's what you've been doing for a couple of years.
Yes.
Well, it's also, you know, you were saying that we weren't having very much movement there. So is it a priority? Do we need, do we work on this right now? Just because it's on our list doesn't mean that it's something that we're gonna work on this year. So that's, that's why you don't necessarily have to have somebody for everything. You know, like the Western Ave traffic calming, that's already happening. DPW is working, uh, on that. So. It's not really anything that we at this point need to do, anything.
I, I think the priority is to just get up to date as to what the state is, is doing. Mast D O T has gotten involved. Get, just check in with them and get up to date. And I'm guessing that will not generate any business for the board, but. Just like a report back that says, here's what the current status is.
All right.
But I can certainly do that.
Yeah. Okay. We're just, should we put here DPW? So the.
I mean, that'll be like in, that'll be in like Heidi's, like town planner reports, right?
Yeah.
That kind of stuff.
So the next area we started discussing, just as you were coming in, Steph, was this, uh, this bigger, um. Thirty thousand feet that stuff, you know, town center and master plan. So you start working on, uh, at least thinking about and organizing the, the, the work to update the master plan. This is gonna take, Heidi, I think she's, would you say it, Heidi? How long do you think it's gonna be?
I would plan on two years.
Yeah, I remember the last round taking forever.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna take a long time. It's one of these things that. I almost feel we should have an update at every meeting on where that stands to just keep. It in the people in the loop, like get a committee together to work on it, be the first. Taking a look at the other one and getting the sections, but just so it keeps it moving along in the next year. Low priority right now, it's. Low priority right now. It's not going to be something we're going to focus on for getting articles to the town meeting, but I think it's going to be kept on the radar.
It, it requires like a really, Marion championed it last time. It just really requires somebody taking the reins and driving it and that's someone who should be focused on like the long-term vision and um, you know, just it's, it's a project. I mean, Marion can't, I can't tell you how much. I mean, part of it too is that Marion did a lot of it herself. And so in the early days, part of it is would be to identify if that's the right approach for this board. Or if there's a need for some capital funds for a consultant to, to weigh in on it, right? So it, it's just going to be a big project, but we definitely need the champion.
We were discussing before you came on, Steph, having working groups outside of the full committee.
Mm-hmm, for sure. Who's got the keyboard? Oh, shoot.
So I mean, I'm involved with the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't know when we're meeting though. I, I don't think there's been any recent meetings. It's no money, obviously.
It's got all those funds.
Well, when there is something going on, you can keep a surprise of it.
Yeah.
I, I did have a call today from Toll Brothers asking if we had a payment in lieu of for our portable housing. And I said, yes, we do. Pointed them to the section.
Looks like there's some activity over there.
They cut down trees, yeah, but I don't think it was for that lot.
So how do we feel right now about this list?
I think the master plan is daunting.
Yeah.
It's going to be, I don't know, just to get, I, I feel it's going to be a certain amount of work just to get our even figure out how to proceed on this. It's uh, there's a lot to it.
Maybe what we should do, that's a really good point. Maybe what we should do is just devote one meeting to everybody like looking at and reading in preparation for this meeting, uh, what's in the master plan. And then just have a, a meeting that is only focused on, okay, what do we think needs to be changed and how, how are we going to go about doing this and uh, and just brainstorming and talking, talking through some of it. And we may need to get at this meeting. We may need some people from DPW and from the Board of Health and from um, ZBA and from the site board, you know, Lisa representative from that too.
I think that's a good idea. I think it would be at least a central agenda item and I'm sure that Marion would come in for that and weigh in on where she thinks maybe it needs updating, because I think that would be a really valuable perspective to have.
That's true. That'd be good.
You know, people like Sean and Addie May, they, they know the town really well, where, where, where issues are and what things that they want to, and we need to focus on as well. So yeah, other than just the, the macroscopic view, it's uh, it's always impacted by the microscopic.
Yeah. So we can pick a meeting for that to be a central focus and one, one where we know Marion and Addie May can attend.
So if these are the main ones, should we try to somehow set a priority by when we want to get them done by, when we think we can get them done by, when we're going to start it? How, how, how would be a good way to, to set a, a, a priority plan of some, some form or fashion other than this is the highest priority second, which I don't think would be very helpful. I think it'd be a little better or more helpful if we kind of said, okay, we want to get this done this year and, and go to town meeting with it, for example, like the you know, the battery energy storage system bylaw, something like that.
All right. I think the stormwater is, is a priority to go to town meeting, next town meeting. And I don't know about site plan review. I'm, I'm going to talk to Chris to see whether we can wait on that one or if he feels that's something that should be addressed because that has come up and something recently. Um, the sign bylaw might, if we can come up with something that is a little simpler, um, Zach McBride from the ZBA. He asked us if we were looking into that again. He asked us if we could really simplify the whole thing. He said it's very difficult for them to interpret our current regulation. So they would like to see something done in that if we can soon. So those I would think would be priorities.
It's Chris Kenny, CK or CC?
CC.
Frank, I feel like the people that we put as champions should be a planning board liaison or member. I mean, Chris can be in there, but I think there should be a, someone who's at every meeting and the same for the DPW piece.
And anybody else want to put their name with this one? Well, maybe, maybe Brett would be interested.
Right, right.
I'd like to do this one in twenty twenty five. Does anybody?
That would be a good goal.
Just like the groundwater and stormwater, if they go together, uh, but I definitely feel the uh, battery energy and the solar in the beginning have to be decoupled and then they're two separate things.
I think the comprehensive review is, oh, naturally has some sort of priority. Maybe it's twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, just because we got it approved in the, in the budget, right?
Right. Town meeting twenty twenty six is my goal for that. I just don't think we're going to have it right, ready for twenty twenty five.
Well, I mean, all of these that say twenty twenty five, where we're talking about bylaws, we're talking about town meeting for twenty twenty six, right?
No, the time, oh, yes, correct.
So that, where most of the, a lot of the work gets done in twenty twenty five.
So I, yeah, I don't know what I'm thinking.
So actually, yeah, then the comprehensive bylaws twenty twenty seven.
So these are town meeting dates then?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll put that as a
It's only applicable to, to, to bylaws, Frank. It's only applicable to the bylaw section, the town meeting date.
Right.
These items on streets and pedestrians is really just staying in the loop. There's no like major drive for the planning board, right?
No. The actu- actually, the um, downtown traffic improvement will be one where the, they will be asking the planning board to get involved in having uh, meetings with that and that probably will be in twenty twenty six. Because we're right now halfway through twenty twenty five. We might get some meeting done by the late fall, early, early winter is my guess.
Yeah, they just got the
They haven't even signed a contract yet.
Right, and but they're looking at the consultants for that.
Right.
Just for that.
Right.
We, we almost need to be developing a schedule and putting milestones for each of these on a master schedule.
So kind of how I did the thing before of where we, we had, where we stood on timing.
Yeah, for three.
Getting the warrant articles done, so but putting it on.
Right.
Okay.
Like a monthly, monthly schedule that just says at one of these months' meetings, we should be talking to
Then we need to have such and such completed.
A timeline.
I mean, yeah. The thing is each of these own projects that down here has its own drivers and schedules, but the bylaws are more controlled by the planning board, so
Right.
It's just.
Okay, we'll try and come up with some scenarios.
And then Jim's stuff on rules, regs and procedures. What, what is your thought on timeline for that, Heidi?
The sooner the better on some of it, but it's just timing. It's like we only have so much limited time, but I would try to put that for twenty twenty five.
Okay. I mean, honestly, that's like, that's where I've seen Jim's name showing up the most. So it's like a different you know, that it can be done in parallel with some of these other things.
Right.
So so it's like everything is, everything with initial looks like it has high priority.
Yeah, twenty twenty five for those. Because to change our regulations or procedures, all we need is a um, public hearing. It's not town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, that's something if we review it over the summer and come up with something, we could do it in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds reasonable.
Before it gets too crazy with warrant stuff.
And then I think the master plan is twenty twenty nine. Is that right? Was it twenty nineteen, the last one?
Because it was ten years. Yep, twenty twenty nine.
Twenty twenty nine completion.
Yep.
But lots between now and then.
Yeah. I, my vision would kind of be to see if we could get a grant, but what I'd love to do is use our energy focus right now on the bylaws and work with a consultant to get that done. And then the next at when that's complete, twenty six, you know, we won't be going to ATM in twenty seven, but it should be complete by twenty, at the end of twenty six is then move over to the master plan. And spend part of twenty six into twenty eight going, doing that. These dates sound so far away.
Why, why do we, we, why do we think that's going to take so long just because of everything else that's on the table?
Well, what I've been seeing with the open space plan, it takes so long for a group of people going over every single section, rewriting it, looking at it, having people weigh in. And like they still have to take their, these, this open space plan to all the different groups and have people read it and weigh in and give comments. That hasn't even happened yet. So it's just like they've, they've broken it down every chapter and they read a chapter and they discuss should we, what should we be doing on this chapter? It, it just
I guess two years will go by pretty quickly.
Yeah, if you're meeting once a month, yeah, and they've now started meeting every two weeks because they realized it was not going to get done. And that's the only thing they do. Like they're not looking at all these other items. It's just, just that right now for the most part.
Yeah, and I, I feel like planning board, when we get into like warrant season, is like all hands on deck on the, on the warrant articles and drop everything else for a couple of months.
Yes.
You know, and then it's, okay, now where were we? Like this meeting, where were we? How do we resume? You know, so even, it's really broken up the, the, the effort, the efforts are really broken up.
And the worst part about it is, is that not only that, but when we get started, we're starting right in the summer, we're, we're kind of like
Yeah.
taking a break. So it's really, we're starting in September. So you got September, November, uh, September, October, November, December. Before you have to have everything done because uh, you know, by that point, you need to have the warrants already done by. So you only have three months.
So Frank, your, your retirement schedule is very fortunate for the planning board.
A lot of work. Forget my, uh, my, my honey do list. I got this list now.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Never mind that we may have a lot of plans coming down our pipeline to review.
I definitely want to get uh, this done.
Well, this looks like a good start.
Yep. All right, Frank, do you want to circulate that list to everyone?
Or should I give it to you and then you do that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it'd be a better way to do that.
Nope, that's fine. Yep.
Safer way anyway. Okay, um, do we want to go on to item number three, scheduled for summer meeting dates?
Yes, because I have a possible correction.
Yes, so we saw.
We have an A and R that's going to be coming and it date is going to be probably for June tenth. So do we want to just make one meeting in June and make it June tenth instead of June third? Not everything's going to be ready, but we have a, you know, the minutes, an application is going to be filed. We have by law to get something reviewed in less than twenty one days. So
Works for me, June tenth.
I was going to say, how about we just make June tenth our one meeting?
So another option possibly in them to throw in, uh, find an ointment, but June the fifteenth, because we typically do the first and the third.
Too late for them to do it. They were, they wanted to get it done.
Okay.
You meant the seventeenth, right? The Tuesday?
Yeah, he was
Oh, sorry. Yes.
No, that's okay. Just
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
So the tenth, the tenth works for me.
Because if they file next week with us and everything's not quite complete, the seventeenth's too late. So June tenth is one that seems to be the sweet spot.
That's good.
And the, the A and R just heads up, it's going to be for Farm Road, sixty five Farm Road. We're finally going to see a plan. And how about, and the fifteenth and nineteenth right now, those are okay for most people?
Yep. For July and August.
Yep.
Maybe Heidi, when you um, reach out to Brett after this meeting to just highlight these dates and make sure that there's no conflicts on her end because
Yeah, I looked back and she had emailed saying, yes, she got the info from Addie May and was planning to be here. So
Okay.
I don't know what happened.
Maybe she didn't realize it was a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I I don't know. Well, anyway, I'll reach out to her.
But you know, check these dates too, because I think
Yeah.
At this point with this, a five-person board and needing a three-person quorum, it's like we have to plan them in a way that like we know.
It was a little iffy this, when we first got on, I was like, okay, where is everyone?
Because things come up at the last minute, somebody gets sick or whatever, you know, and we just need to make sure that when we plan them, all five of us can actually try to be there.
Right.
So it seems like June the tenth is probably the, the lea- the least flexible of the uh, the three dates.
I think we had picked the other ones because they were kind of mid-month to
Right.
Right.
Straddle the
And that puts something right in the middle of each month essentially. So that's kind of, that's good. If any other plans come in, we'll have to address it.
All right, are there any uh, reports on meetings with other boards or entities?
I spoke to Frank Jenkins about uh, having a land acquisition meeting at some point soon, so but I, it's not scheduled yet. But we'll try to do one sometime early in the summer.
Great.
Anybody else? Heidi, town planner report?
Yeah, it was the A and R and um, you know, hopefully getting an associate member on here as well as someone who can add a different dimension um, to us. Um, Rob, are you able, I, I'd emailed you. Are you going to go to the Metro West meeting on Thursday? Bless you.
Thank you.
Let's see, when is that?
It was Thursday morning. It's the Metro West Regional one.
This Thursday?
Yeah, I think you've gone to them before.
Yeah, um.
I can't make it and Marion said she's going to try to, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I let's see, is where was, uh, I
It's in Wellesley. Yeah, I can send you the information. If you, if you make it great.
I have it. I just couldn't remember at the time. Um, I think it's at nine AM.
I think it's eight, eight or eight thirty. It's early. Yeah, they're early.
Okay. I can probably do it. I have to drop my car off for some service and my it's, it's scheduled for Thursday morning and it takes like a long time to get an appointment at the dealer, but But I can probably just drop it off early or something like that, so.
And and if you're not, if not, we can't. Uh it's it's eight to nine fifteen.
Okay.
Um at Welsey Town Hall. And and they're just discussing Metro West priorities, goals and projects, so. It it's it's a breakfast. If you, I don't think it's, if you make it great.
Maybe I'll just, yeah, maybe I'll see if I could actually drop it off a little late and, you know, if it's eight to nine fifteen, I can drop it off at. Ten and they can still get the work done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Marion usually makes them and she's she's gonna try to, so that's good.
Heidi, just a note, I'm just I'm catching up on on emails that have come through and it looks like anything you send from your sixdoils@gmail. Goes to um, at least it went to my spam.
Ah, okay.
So.
So probably went to everyone else. Check everyone else, check your spam, because I did send the afternoon ones from the Six Doils one.
Yeah, mine just says uh that that the uh town has successfully prevented a fish message from Heidi Doyle. So, go town.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to talk to Klaus and say, Klaus, I can't believe that now. They they did up their security.
Yeah.
On things, I know. Great, okay, so.
Just FYI.
And it's funny, because I had, I tried to set whenever I send something, even though I'm in my work email, if it gets sent from my phone, it. It's gets shown as coming from my home one. I can't get that to stop. I don't know.
Oh.
It's weird, yeah. So that's why like for these meetings, I usually come in person to the office because it's easier, but I don't know what it is. If I try to work on my phone, it automatically reverts to the other. And I even put my work one on it thinking maybe that will help. It didn't, obviously, because it went to your spam. Well, I'll resend what I sent this afternoon. It was just what Frank just showed.
Yeah, it just says priorities list, so I figure it's that Excel document.
Right, and the only cor- correction was the putting the signs on it.
Yeah, I I wouldn't bother because you can send out the new version from Frank instead, so.
Okay.
Um.
But I don't have anything else right now. Okay, and I think that's it. Once I get the A and R materials like in the next week, probably a week and a half, um I will forward them. I want to look at, but again, we'll just be looking at if they have street frontage. They meet the zoning acreage requirements and that um they've got access. That's it.
That's.
Yeah.
All right, then do we adjourn this meeting? Anybody else gotta have anything before we do that? This will be the uh the fastest meeting.
Yeah.
Way to go.
Keep going, Frank.
All right, so I make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
So Rob will second. So all those in favor, Steph Harrison?
Hi.
Rob Wolf?
Hi.
Jim Guarino?
Hi.
And I, Frank Hookham and I also. So we end this planning board meeting, May the twentieth at eight oh three. Thank you for a wonderful and productive first meeting, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Steph. Thank you, Frank, and um hope you feel better.
Thank you, yeah. Twice in one month. I I haven't been sick like in in like years and now twice in one month I get a.
All right, see everyone later.
Good night all.
Bye bye.
Feel better.